Welcome to day two of hearing stream four on the Napier City proposed district plan, with topics being centre zones, residential zones, noise and a few precincts. Here today on the panel, hearing submissions is, to my left, Commissioner Rob Van Voorthuisen and to my right, Commissioner Hayley Brown. And I'm Robert Schofield, chair. We've got a number of submitters to be heard this morning, but we should conclude the hearing by lunchtime today. So first on our list today, just get the, Mr Penman, is it? Can you hear us all right?
Yes, yeah, I can hear you fine, yep.
Oh, great. I'll just ask IT if we can ratchet up your volume a little bit from here. Yep, okay. So I've got your submission in front of us and I've tracked you down on the district planning maps as well, your address, so I've got an idea of the context.
We've seen them quite a few times and there's a lot of carp, you know, a lot of need for parking, there's trucks come in there. So it's more on our end, at the top end of Mearney Road, on the north side of King Street, and not all the way down King Street, obviously. Yeah, so my main concern really was if you have no off-street parking on some of these houses that were closed in the future, then obviously it becomes a one-way street when cars are parking on both sides of the road. Yeah, I think there is, just in favour, I suppose, there is reasonably large booms on some housing and some of that, those booms have been bricked for parking. I know ours isn't bricked for parking, I didn't quite catch the council meeting it when that happened, but yeah, so, I mean, I suppose, yeah, in that vein, I guess, you could offer parking, sort of a bit of off-street parking on the booms, if they were bricked, I guess. Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it for me, and thanks for the opportunity to contribute.
Okay. Yes, thank you very much for that. I'll just turn to the panel to see if there's any questions for you, Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
No, Mr Penman, no questions for you, but just to let you know, the previous Labour government changed a national policy statement so that councils such as Napier and other sitting district councils aren't allowed to require parking anymore in their district plans. But in the district plan that's before us, should a development including in the MRZ zone require resource consent, then the assessment criteria that decision-makers take into account do enable them to look at parking, whether parking has been provided and whether it's safe for residents and users of the street. So that's probably about as far as we can go at the moment in terms of the government direction that we need to operate under.
Okay, I understand that, and it's, yeah, I just wanted to give a person's point of view from the street, that what I see that might help the council when it comes to that time, I'm sure I don't think I'll be living in the street when it all happens, but yeah, but anyway, it's just to help and give you some information there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you very much, Mr Penman, for your time and effort, much appreciated.
Sweet, thank you very much, cheers, let me contribute.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay, goodbye.
Bye. So, do we have our next submitter online? Are they? Ms Beecham?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we certainly can. Is it good volume for the, yeah, all good? So we've read your pre-circulated evidence and of course the submission from TW Property. So, but we're in your hands in terms of the key points you would like to make.
Okay, yeah, I just have an overview of my evidence, so I'll present that.
Okay.
And then can answer any questions if there are some.
Thank you.
So my name is Pitt Beecham, I am a senior planner at Strategy Planning, I'm presenting planning evidence on behalf of TW Property. TW made submissions on provisions relating to the general residential zone, the medium-density residential zone, the high-density residential zone and the mixed-use zone, while recommendations have been made by the officers to accept some of the relief sought, my evidence relates to relief sought for five specific standards across these zones. So the fences and walls standards, standards GRZ S eight, MRZ S eight and HRZ S eight, the section 42a reports recommend amendments to the wording of these standards resulting in increased visual permeability for front fences. My concern is that these changes to not allow flexibility in the design to provide for adequate privacy for front-facing units and that they prevent adequate screening for service areas within the front yard. Changes are sought to the wording of the fences and wall standards to retain options for partially solid front fencing, to balance privacy needs with streetscape amenity outcomes as were originally notified. This includes the provision for 50% of the length of the front boundary to be visually impermeable. Outdoor living space standards, GRZ S eleven, MRZ S eleven and HRZ S eleven, and open space standard MUZ S eight. Changes are sought to how outdoor living space is managed whereby clauses three A and B of each of these standards are sought to be deleted, which relate to open space south of a building. These provisions require a six-metre separation distance for single-storey and nine-metre distance for two-story buildings, are not fit for purpose for higher-density development which is enabled in the medium-density, high-density and mixed-use zones. The standard does not address development over three stories, which are permitted by the increased height limits in these zones, and is impractical for upper-level dwellings which provide outdoor living spaces via balconies. Further, the origin point for measuring the arc between 135 to 225 degrees is unclear. I propose within my evidence that this portion of the standard is deleted and should instead be managed by appropriate assessment criteria, which is already in place for the mixed, sorry, the medium-density residential, the high-density residential and the mixed-use zone, however, I propose a new assessment criteria for the general residential zone. The residential outlook space standard, MRZ S twelve and HRZ S twelve, the outlook space requirements are unnecessarily restrictive. The six-metre depth requirement for the medium-density residential zone exceeds national standards and has the potential to force inefficient site layouts. It also does not align with the requirements for the outdoor living space. It is recommended to reduce the outlook space for the medium-density residential zone to four metres by four metres, which is consistent with national standards. Further, allow for a reduction to three metres in depth where ground-floor outlook is defined by boundary fencing in both the medium-density and the high-density residential zones. The building length standards, standards MRZ S fourteen and HRZ S fourteen, the 22-metre maximum building length restricts efficient site development, it doesn't align with established or consented development in Napier and comprises, compromises the uptake of terrace housing and apartment buildings. It also significantly increases building costs where separate built form is forced. TW seeks that this standard should be deleted and the issue of long unbroken buildings instead be managed via assessment criteria which considers architectural design matters such as building modulation, articulation, variations in form and materials. And then finally, the assessment criteria relating to the Hastings Residential Intensification Guidelines contained within GRZ AC one, MRZ AC one, HRZ AC one and MUZ AC one. The assessment criteria relating to the Hastings Residential Intensification Guidelines are sought to be deleted on the basis that these have not been subject to a Schedule One process and the assessment criteria should focus on effects rather than prescriptive design solutions. They should be included as a, sorry, reference to the design guidelines should be included as a guidance document only. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple from me. The Hastings Design Guide, that was incorporated by reference into the plan, so in principle it was open to submissions as part of the proposed district plan process, and I gather there weren't any from yesterday's hearing on that, but it is now recommended by the reporting officers to sort of change that significantly and only focus on the key elements in that design guide, rather than necessarily the whole gamut. So just to clarify that point, can I, can I ask a question? You're recommending in terms of the fences and walls issue, that the, that standard, the common standard around, you're adding in blue into, say, GRZ S eight one A Roman numeral three. I'm just wondering how that would work, because there's an and there, it says 1.8 metres in height for no more than 50% of the site frontage and 1.8 metres in height if a minimum. But can you just explain how that would work?
Sorry, was that A three?
Yeah, that's right, yep.
I'll just have a quick read, there perhaps could have been a typo, sorry. So 1.8 metres in height or 1.8 metres in height if the fence, for no more than 50% of the site frontage. No, sorry, what that is saying is that...
Sorry, if I could interrupt, do you think it should be worded the same as E Romans two? I'm just wondering if you had a cut-and-paste error.
E Romans two, 1.8 metre in height for no more than 50% of the country, 1.8 metres in height. Yes, yeah, that's correct.
The remainder, right.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so it's saying that 50% can be solid and then the remaining half is 1.8 with either 300mm if you're in A or 600mm if you're in E.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Just in terms of the outdoor living space requirements, you're recommending it be deleted. Have you considered whether there are other ways of addressing the problem you've identified in terms of how to provide it, rather than just relying on assessment criteria? Are there other standards that could be used?
I think that, well, when you get into the heights permitted within the medium-density, high-density and the mixed-use, it becomes quite difficult to provide for it in a manner such as what has been notified, because you can't just keep on increasing that number. You know, it's six and it's nine metres, you can't then go 12 metres, 15 metres and so on, because it just becomes unrealistic and you wouldn't be able to use the sites. So I think that because as well, in the general residential zone, the consenting trigger, well, permitted activity is one dwelling, and I now understand that that has been increased to three dwellings for the mixed, I mean, sorry, the medium-density and the high-density residential zones. But, so as you go beyond that and sites become more intensified, I guess, which is when these issues become more prevalent, then it will become assessed under the assessment criteria anyway.
Okay, thank you. Just one final question, the reduction that you're seeking in the outdoor living area of...
Outlook space.
Yeah. Can you just lead me through the logic? So if you had a fence, you could reduce the amount of outdoor living space. To me, that seems to be the contrary to, counterintuitive almost to, but you think if you had a fence, you might want to increase the...
The, the purpose for the outlook space standard is for, it's two-fold, it's for privacy and for shading, well, sorry, adequate sunlight. And so what I'm saying there is that at ground level, if you have a fence, you are then, you have, sorry, I guess what it's trying to do is it's separating the different scenarios from, say, a second-floor dwelling where you can't have a fence and so you have to have that adequate separation to get the privacy, whereas at ground level you can have a fence and so that affords the ground-level units with adequate privacy. And then if you are at ground level and you're on two sides of the fence, a six-metre separation is still sufficient to provide adequate sunlight access.
Okay, thank you.
Because the, sorry, the, the purpose of the standard doesn't necessarily say to have like a open visual space, which I think is kind of what you were meaning there about it being counterintuitive. It's for private, you know, it says it's for privacy and sunlight access.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel? Commissioner Brown?
On page 21 of your evidence, you have put in some suggested wording, suggesting that it's to be visually attractive. I'm just thinking, that sounds very subjective. I'm not a planner, is that something that would be easily understood by planners?
That was, so that's already within the high-density residential zone assessment criteria, and I copied that into the medium-density zone, the recommended assessment criteria. I guess that is quite subjective, development is designed to be visually attractive when viewed from neighbouring sites. I guess it says through the use of architectural treatments, materials and landscaping, so it does, like, it gives you like a criteria, I guess, for how it can be visually attractive by looking into those different elements.
Yeah. And then my other questions were around...
Yeah, sorry.
There you go.
I was just going to say, sorry, I guess it's like, you know, there's a difference between having a blank three-story wall or a three-story wall that has different architectural treatments and materials and provides some visual interest when viewed from neighbouring sites. So those are the kind of things that, that would require consideration of.
Okay. And then just in your analysis of the, the building length, and so you were doing that with the outdoor living space and, oh yeah, so yeah, for both of those, your assumption in the, in your evidence is that it's based off one, and then we had yesterday the thing that would be on two to three. We also had in the general zone that there was a submitter asking for it to be moved from one to two dwellings permitted. Just wondering if that changes your thinking in the general zone criteria?
Sorry, are you meaning the trigger for, what are you referring to, sorry?
Yeah, so, for both your outdoor living space and the building length, but probably let's focus on the building length standards.
Building length is only, sorry to interrupt, building length is only applicable within the medium-density and the high-density residential zones, it's not within the general residential.
Okay, oh yeah, and you've already covered that other bit off then. And then, yeah, does it change anything for the living space in the general zone then? Or no?
The south-facing living space?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think so. I think that three dwellings or two, two, two to three dwellings on a site, I mean, it's hard, I guess it's hard to say because there's so many variables on sites, but two to three dwellings on a site, you probably are able to get good outcomes in terms of, you know, north-facing outdoor living areas and that kind of thing. It's kind of when you're going beyond that and looking more into the terrace housing or the, you know, apartment-style units that these, that, that, that you are starting to get squeezed on the site. So I think it's, yeah, still, I am still happy with my assessment if the trigger is changed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Just the issue of building length was raised yesterday by witnesses for Kaingora, and the issues you've raised in the relief you're proposing is remarkably similar to them. Just wondering, had you been in discussion with Kaingora at all over this issue or is this just a TW matter?
I haven't, I haven't spoken to Kaingora, it's a TW matter.
All right. Well then, thanks very much for your evidence and for the recommendation you've got at your paragraph 58, that's, that'll be useful and help us in our deliberations when we come to the side on this matter of building length, so thanks for that. Otherwise, no questions.
No worries.
Okay, thank you. Now I have no further questions, so thank you very much, Ms Beecham, for your contribution this morning, been helpful.
No worries. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We do have a slight change in the schedule as Mr Jury is not available at the moment, but we do have Ms McFlynn available to come online.
In person.
Oh, there we are. Not more than online, in person, so welcome, Ms McFlynn again. Just give you a moment to settle down and we'll just grab your evidence in front of Your evidence is fairly short and brief, so thank you for that. I'm having some folder failure here. Okay, so welcome, Ms McFlynn. Are you ready to talk to us? Okay, this is all yours.
All right, and so I'm pretty sure that you all know who I am now, Angela McFlynn from McFlynn Serving and Planning.
Yep, thank you.
So I'll try and keep this brief for you. The first submission pointer made was in regards to the notification status for the general residential zone. As the rule was drafted, any development of more than one dwelling on a site would be precluded from being notified regardless of whether it complies with any other standards or not. I don't believe that is appropriate, I think the notification preclusion should only apply when there's multiple units and all of the other relevant development standards, site coverage and setbacks and things, outdoor living space are also met. And I did note a particular concern with how it's been recommended, that even if there was a boundary infringement, the rule states that limited or public notification is not required, so there's, as it's written, no ability for neighbours to have any input even on things that directly affect them as neighbours. I have provided two wordings depending on what the actual intention is for the rule. If it was intended as was stated in the section 42a report that it only applies when there's one dwelling on a site, then that could be remedied by rewording and stating that an application is precluded where it, what did I say, where it, oh, where, yeah, clause one of rule GRZR one A is met, that would limit the preclusion to where there's only one dwelling on the site. But I don't think that was what was intended, and so therefore the wording that I think I must have, might have originally proposed and attached as appendix A, that notifications precluded for one or more residential units that comply with all other relevant to a limited standards. I did make a similar submission for the medium and high-density residential zones and the, the corresponding rules for those zones have been recommended to be changed as a response to that as well, so I'm not entirely sure why the general residential zone has been treated differently, but I think the same changes to rules would be appropriate. I'm not entirely sure why the general residential zone has been treated differently, but I think the same changes to rules would be appropriate. Moving down to paragraph fourteen. Noted that within the medium-density and high-density residential zones, it's recommended that minor residential units be provided for separately with a similar notification preclusion. For consistency, we suggest that the notification status provision of these new rules is also amended to the wording now recommended for those MRZR one B and HRZR one B rules. So that the same notification preclusion for minor residential units only applies where they also do not meet the other standards. I would have made a similar comment for the general residential zone, but I completely overlooked the what's it called? Minor residential unit rule in that zone. I didn't make a submission on it, so. Moving to the large lot residential zone. I suggested that a minor residential unit should be able to be established as a permitted activity within this zone. The same as in other residential rural zones. But I did note that this is basically going to happen sometime before the end of the year regardless as a consequence of the new national environmental standard that's under development, but that will only allow up to a seventy-square-metre size. Suggest that it would be appropriate for consistency to also have an eighty-square-metre supplementary dwelling as a permitted activity in this zone, just for consistency across the zones. Can't, can't really see any benefit to having to fall back on the national environmental standard just for this zone. With that slightly smaller size limit. Potentially because those will also be exempt from building consent, that's what people will build anyway, but for planning purposes, I think consistency across the zones is sensible. Couldn't quite follow the reasoning behind needing to specifically look at infrastructure for minor residential dwellings. Particularly like for stormwater. I couldn't quite see how the stormwater management from an eighty-square-metre supplementary dwelling might be different from the stormwater management from an eighty-square-metre accessory building that's not a supplementary dwelling. If the site coverage and other standards were met. Alternatively, if the concern was for affluent disposal. The effects of having two people that would otherwise live in a supplementary dwelling, living in a larger principal dwelling. Not quite clear what the difference is that needs to be specifically managed there, but perhaps the council planners can clarify that point. I was pleased to see that recommended that the visit accommodation be allowed as a permitted activity within an existing residential building. And it's sensible to, for the limit on the number of estuary consisted with other zones, so happy to see that in there. The reference to the Hastings District Council Residential Intensification Design Guide. I am a resident of Hastings and have a particular aversion to the Hastings Residential Intensification Design Guide and the types of developments that have been popping up throughout Hastings. And basically in line with that Residential Intensification Design Guide. Without going into detail of those developments, I think Napier should be coming up with their own design guidelines that will have much better outcomes. The, the types of residential intensification that's been going on in Napier, from what I have seen, is of a far higher standard than what has been allowed to be developed in Hastings, and I think you should protect that. And not start to try to mimic what I'm starting to feel like I live in Slum City. So yeah, I think Napier doesn't want to go down that path. But that's just a personal bias of mine. And I also did have a general submission point that wasn't picked up for all sections of the plan, just in relation to removing the requirement considering, to consider objectives and policies from assessment criteria for controlled and restricted discretionary activities. That was picked up in the subdivision chapter, and there were submissions by several people to that effect, and that was I think picked up on and recommended that that be done, that those, those assessment criteria be removed. So would be really, really happy to see that happen throughout the plan. I don't really see the need to have assessment criteria for controlled and restricted discretionary activities restricted to the entire plan. And so that was it. Any questions?
Just a couple from me before I turn to the panel. Firstly, just to make sure I understand your, I'm looking at your appendix A for the change in rule one to the GRZ. So just, just putting aside who's recommending what changes. It would say it's permitted, residential units and residential activity are permitted if to the activity complies with all of the standards in the general residential.
Yep.
Zone, but if you don't meet those conditions, you're restricted discretionary. And the notification status is, as you recommend, would be that it's precluded from notification only if compliance with standards S one and S eleven is achieved, or possibly S twelve. So how, how would that work in terms of, where would the non-compliance be that would trigger an RDA consent? If it complied with those standards, just.
Would be, it would be any development that was more than one residential unit on a site would be restricted discretionary. Or one residential unit on a site that doesn't comply with those other standards would be.
So the thing is, provided that it was one unit residential site, or more than one, that it met all the standards. Okay, I'm with you now. Good. In terms of the design guide, you used the word adherence to, now there were some recommended changes to how the plan would use or not use the design guide as, through opening statements with the reporting officers. But you used the word adherence, where it was only really one of the assessment criteria. And even that says the extent to which it's consistent with that design guide rather than, you know, using the word adherence or someone would like that. So can I just get your comment on that?
That was probably a consequence of just how quickly I wrote the evidence. Yeah, I just, I have a strong aversion to the Hastings Residential Design Guide and I don't think Napier needs to rely on it. And I think they can do better, basically.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
None from me.
There is. Thank you very much, Ms. McFlynn. Thank you. And for being flexible in terms of your appearance. Now, I do believe we have Mr. Jury here, ready to come on and talk to us. And Stuart, thank you, welcome. We have your pre-circulated evidence. Thank you very much. Again, you have a fairly short statement of evidence, but some key points you wish to make, so we have read your, your evidence, but I'll hand it over to you to sort of emphasize the key points that you maybe should make.
Thank you. What I think, how we'll go about this is I've got my evidence outline, sort of five key matters. And Mrs. Stewart's evidence was primarily in support of the first. So I might just start from paragraph nine, just in regard to rule prec two, R two A, which applies to the visual prominent zone. And then just summarize the remaining matters and happy to take questions as we go.
Okay, thank you.
So rule prec two, R two A, requires buildings to be screened from view from Church Road by their location and design or by existing vegetation. And the key point here is as at the time consent is granted. And so in the evidence, we've raised a number of points and a number of concerns. Those points, I guess, can be summarized by the fact that the rule implies that buildings cannot be seen. And there's two issues there. One is that they cannot be seen at the time that consent or building consent is applied for them. And then secondly, they cannot be seen essentially either. Our point here is that the issue with the buildings having to be screened at the time of building consent delays uptake. It assumes that essentially that whole vegetated hillside needs to be planted with years of maturity to occur before the development can actually take place. Which delays uptake of that development area, which is for the purpose of managing urban growth. The other key issue in terms of the workability of the rule is that the hillside concerned is not actually owned by the developer. And there is no ability for the future owners of those lots to have any control over that hillside being planted in the first place, let alone its, its, its rate of uptake, so to speak. And that, that issue arose some time ago when Marist Holdings, I think it's referred to, applied to the Napier City Council to essentially subdivide that hillside off from the balance of the land on, on the elevated area where the residential zone is located. So I make the point there that, you know, while the rule may have been able to work when the ownership structure was essentially the same. Since that initial subdivision, which was granted, which Emerald Hills, Joint Venture Limited, which is our client, had no involvement in at the time. Given the passage time, that rule is now just no longer workable in our view. So that's, that's one of the, that's sort of the first key point. And we've basically identified that there's functional challenges. We acknowledge that the Plan Change Twelve hearings panel did question the two planning experts on the, on the approach and the detail of the rule. People felt comfortable at the time, but I think things have happened since then. That makes that rule very challenging, if not impossible, to actually implement. The, the other point of the evidence is that while the rule seeks screening, which is, which is, which I've sort of referred to as quite a a drastic end of the spectrum. We don't see any policy guidance for such a drastic outcome. And I've identified the relevant policies for the development area and also the residential precinct. And I've just made the point here in each case that none of them need lead to screening as the outcome. In fact, I think the only place that screening becomes referred to is in the assessment criteria associated with the rule. So my view is that the rule itself isn't workable, and there's not really sufficient policy support to indicate that screening is the outcome to achieve the objectives and policies. And that essentially another way to manage visual effects is very much possible without running into those functional challenges. Now, with me today is Deborah Stewart, so Deborah's been, we can introduce herself really. But she's been sort of working with this matter as well, so invite Deborah to provide a bit of comment as well.
Good morning, everyone. It's lovely to be here in front of you. Nice to see some familiar faces. Yeah, so Keam's outlined the planning bit, and I don't profess or have any desire to be a planning expert, thank goodness. But those, those, those hills and that skyline is important, there's no question there. The challenge we are facing is how best to ensure that the characteristics of that landscape, given the change over time, particularly with the change in ownership, is best managed. And, and the rule that requires screening at the time of application, I'm not sure that that's going to give us the best outcome or the best response to, to that landscape character. And, and from a landscape perspective, my preference is that integrated design solutions are, are developed. All as one, as opposed to kind of layering them up over time. Yes, I suppose that's another of the issue for me. I, I do find that rule particularly challenging, and I've got, I've tried to get my head around it as, as to how that would work, and you're going to plant the trees and then you're going to remove the trees or rely on the trees on the neighbour's land. Which I find challenging. Yeah, so, so that's another of the issue, really.
And, and I feel we haven't necessarily come without a solution. Because in paragraph twenty-five, I think, I think amending assessment criteria O three essentially sets everything up to be able to be considered at the subdivision stage. So just as Deborah says, we prepare a subdivision application for development of that residential area. We take notice of the objectives and policies specifically referred to here. There's an assessment criteria which addresses the hillside, which although, you know, the landowner has very little actual control over. The theme there is that we manage views and we soften views of the houses from the road. That can be achieved, or a subdivision proposal can be proposed to give regard to the objectives and policies and to take into account the assessment criteria. So on the basis that rule prec two, R two A is unworkable, and that there is sufficient policy direction to manage visual effects from Church Road without the rule, it's my view that the rule can simply be removed without compromising outcomes anticipated through a subdivision process. Happy to pause there and take any questions.
Well, just, just a question from an out-of-towner. Who's just very generally familiar with the site. So you saying there is no solution to the, the question, or you're saying there is another solution, but.
There is a, there is a solution. I, I think if the rule was to be deleted on the basis that it's not workable, then there is still sufficient guidance within the objectives and policies and the assessment criteria pertaining to subdivision to be able to manage those landscape values and those visual effects from Church Road. And that you can expect from the correct implementation of all of those provisions, that there will be an outcome where ultimately Napier City Council will need to work with that landowner of the hillside to actually get that planted. And then the subdivision proposal that comes at the top of that elevated area will then be subject to the objectives and policies. Which may involve good earthwork design, it may involve planting plants, all that can be presented at the time of subdivision. It's just that the outcome will be, the assessment criteria needs to be softened from pure screening to softening.
Okay, so you're suggesting deleting that controlled activity rule?
Yes.
In its entirety?
In its entirety.
And relying on the consent process through the assessment criteria. I'm just looking at the assessment criteria, can you point to where?
So the main, the main one that talks about the woodland hillside is assessment cri, it's in the dev three chapter?
Dev three, yep.
AC one, A three. And the assessment criteria is under O. According to the way that I've recorded it here. Oh, sorry, I've put a circle through it. Yeah, it's an O, O A, sorry, O three.
So just the assessment criteria, can you read that out for me, just to make sure I've got the right one?
Yeah, so it's woodland hillside, and that says whether the hillside facing Church Road behind the Mission Vineyard and Grand Mason will be planted.
Okay.
And then that's point three, which currently says the screening of houses in the residential precinct when viewed through Road. You're suggesting that that be amended to soft. You're suggesting that that be amended to softening.
Where would the softening be?
Softening would essentially replace the word screening.
Three. Yeah, so the softening of houses in the residential.
Correct.
Just, it does read a bit funny, the softening of houses. Not going to be padded in duvets. I'm just wondering, is it a softening of views of the houses or something?
Absolutely.
To just explain what that means. Yeah. Okay.
There may be a more elegant word.
Might look to Ms Stewart for that.
That's right.
I can't get rid of the houses. I'm thinking jelly.
Yeah, thank you.
And just on that same matter, I was following your argument quite well until I got to Romans three and I don't like the word softening at all, so I've come up with some other word that has a more, I guess, objective.
What a word like integrate?
I'll leave it to you to think of a word that a decision-maker would be clearing their mind what they're supposed to do, because I don't know how you can soften a house. I agree with the chair.
Yep. That feel cool? Thank you. We'll do some work and see if we can come back.
I'm not worried about the rationale for what you're suggesting, I was just concerned with the relief that you were providing.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my head back into the rule itself. So the rule itself is precinct 2R2, correct? Make sure I'm on the right page.
Yes.
Residential activities within prominent visual development area is identified on the structure plan.
Yep.
So your proposal would remove that entirely?
Yes.
And, okay, so where would that issue be addressed in the rules? Under subdivision?
So my understanding is that the subdivision chapter still considers or still requires the objectives and policies of the development area and the precinct to be considered.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's not explicit that the hillside one, as in, oh, sorry, if it's not explicit that the assessment criteria O3 needs to be considered at subdivision stage, then that could be. Because what we've got is that all of these assessment criteria were included as design outcomes in the Mission Special Character Zone and the Operative Plan. What's happened is that all of the objectives and policies and assessment criteria and to some regard the rules of that operative chapter have now been spread across the subdivision, the development area and the Mission Residential Precinct chapters. So it may well be that some of the assessment criteria do need to be considered at subdivision stage that aren't linked into the subdivision chapter now. So that would just need to be checked.
Okay, and just a final question then. So you're confident that there's scope within the land holdings that would be subdivided to create that softening of houses?
Yes.
Is your concern was all the existing trees and things that are not on site, they're off-site?
Yep.
But you're confident there is room and capacity in the site to provide that softening?
So if my initial submission is available to you, you will see that there is somewhat slim slither of land that Emerald Hills owns at the top of the hill that kind of comes down the hill a little bit. I don't have my original submission with me. But essentially what I would envisage is an earthwork design plus a planting concept for that area, which would predominantly be within that thin slither that goes over the hill slope, such that Emerald Hills would do the best it can with the land that it's got and the tools that it's got to be able to give regard to those objectives and policies. Now, as I say, how the council works with Marist Holdings over the whole hillside to achieve the outcomes in this plan is a matter between the council and that landowner. For background, Emerald Hills has actually been trying to work with both to encourage and facilitate at their own cost the development of a landscaping plan. That landscaping plan was put to council some time ago and hasn't been agreed to. Not that there's a requirement for council to agree to it because it is impossible for it to be promoted now through a subdivision process because the land has already been subdivided without that matter being considered. But the point is that with the land and the tools that Emerald Hills has, we consider that a design can be put forward to give regard to those objectives and policies the best it can.
Thank you. Any questions or any further questions?
Not on that, no.
No. Got some other questions?
Nope.
Nope. No, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, that was very helpful.
Okay, so we now move on to page seven in regards to rule prec 2R3A. Now, that rule relates to subdivision and it's essentially a carry-through of rule 51B.77 of the Operative Plan. What's dropped out of that rule, however, is the aspect of it that precludes notification. So our submission here is that the clause that precludes notification in the operative rule should be carried through to the proposed rule. Now, I've looked into the original section 32 evaluation report, which I've outlined in paragraph 31 of my evidence, which provides the reasoning for that. And then coming to the officer's recommendation in the section 42A report, I've considered that. And as I say, I've been quite simple in my view to say that essentially I don't consider that that reasoning trumps the evaluation as part of Plan Change 12. And in paragraph 34, I also sort of just outline the implications of imposing or not having that direction to preclude notification on the interests of the landowner.
Any questions?
Thank you. The next point there is in regard to the classification of retirement villages as discretionary activity within this residential environment as opposed to other residential environments, which is just restricted discretionary activity. So I've outlined essentially that the, that rule GRZR10, applying to the general residential zone, outlines a number of matters of discretion. And I've considered that if a proposal was considered as a restricted discretionary activity, subject to those matters of discretion, which I've outlined in paragraph 39 of my evidence, that those matters would be sufficient to give regard to the relevant objectives and policies. And that essentially there is no need for a different approach for this residential environment compared to other residential environments. Moving on to standard prec 2S3, this one requires a five-metre setback adjoining a collector road. And this is getting into some of the granular detail of the rules. Essentially, within the Mission precinct, there are no identified collector roads. Looking at the Napier roading hierarchy, it doesn't actually refer to collector roads. Also noted here that the design guidelines, which have been approved as part of the subdivisions within the precinct to date, they only have a three-metre setback and that that is consistent with other residential zones, which I haven't identified anywhere where those other residential zones are subject to a five-metre setback. So for consistency with the plan, with the residential environments and also the design guidelines, our submission is to essentially delete A of that rule, which requires a five-metre setback from a main collector road. And then lastly, there's just a couple of points in regard to the assessment criteria. The first point was in relation to the two that refer to the vesting of wastewater and water supply networks within the council. Our submission was that we sought quite clear intent that wastewater and water supply networks were to be vested in council. And that was for, to essentially bring through that clear intent from the Operative Plan. As I've outlined in the evidence, I appreciate that the officer's views that there still needs to be, I guess, assessment or a bit of intention created to make sure that it's designed to a condition that it can be vested. So I've made some amendments to Q and R, as seen on page 11 of my evidence, to essentially try to strike some balance.
And Q and T, is that?
Q and T, yes. All right. Again, there may be more elegant wording, but the idea is to try to bring in that the general intention is for municipal infrastructure to be vested. And then in regard to U, I think it's just a correction point here is that I feel as though the officer is intended to recommend the relief sought, it's just that there's two options in the section 42A report and we're just confirming that the wording as expressed on page 17 of the section 42A report is the approach that Emerald Hills supports.
Just while my commissioners are thinking, in terms of the retirement village question, where would that likely be? Because it's not shown on the master plan as far as I can see. In terms of notification issues, it might be quite relevant where that might be.
Yes, so Somerset actually have a contract over, and this is publicly known, over a large lot, which is essentially located right in the middle of the residential precinct. If you have a look at the structure plan, there is kind of three, three sort of hills.
Yep.
Little one, if I can come and...
Sort of more triangular shaped area.
Yeah, I can come and show you if you like.
All right, okay, not where I thought. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
Just one, in terms of the very last issue you raised on assessment criteria U. Just looking at the wording at the bottom of your evidence, the last third to last line, shouldn't it say for each lot to demonstrate? That's the purpose of the geotechnical assessment, it's not an or, is it?
I think what is being suggested, so I'll just take a moment just to read again.
I think the or should be crossed out and the two should be not crossed out.
The point is that it's, the tests in my view of geotechnical suitability for residential housing at the time of subdivision is not to confirm strict accordance of good ground with that standard because there are multiple ways of designing foundations if you do not have good ground that can still lead to residential outcomes that wouldn't be considered unsuitable. That was the point of just locking that particular criteria into the assessment criteria does prove difficult. So the idea was to sort of, by all means, at the time of subdivision, have a geotechnical report, but that report need only confirm that the land is suitable for residential development as opposed to confirming the ultimate, which is good ground, which essentially just leads you down the design.
Your wording doesn't work, does it? Because if you read it through, we have the application provides an investigation by a geotechnical engineer of the existing ground and the proposed earthworks for each lot. And you're suggesting or demonstrates, well, the or is conjunctive, so that would still relate to the investigation undertaken by the geotechnical engineer. So if you're saying that there should be an either-or, either a detailed investigation by a geotechnical engineer or something else, then you need to do some further work on the wording. And if there is to be an or, then how would that demonstration occur unless it's undertaken by a geotechnical engineer? I just referred to my earlier comment, I think the two should remain and the or should go, unless you can come up with some wording that might convince me otherwise.
Okay, no, that's fine, I can look into that, that's absolutely fine.
But that was all other than that, I think the points you've made are clear anyway.
Just on that point, to make sure I've got your intent correct in my head, is it that you do a geo-tech report and it either proves that you've got good ground?
Yep.
So you can follow the standard process or it informs a bespoke design of foundation? Okay.
Okay, thank you. In terms of coming back to us, we normally set a sort of two-week kind of limit to submit us returning us, but probably in regard, it's not a large extent of response we're looking for. You should be able to come back within that two weeks. But yeah, but two weeks from today would be good, yeah.
I was going to say the end of the day.
Yeah, well, I know, I'm being generous, I'm being generous.
We'll come back to you.
They've got to reword.
So just to confirm though, it was really just the Peter wording around the word softening?
Yeah.
And then just clarifying that matter we were just talking about now in regard to assessment criteria U.
Yep. That's right.
Might need a workshop on softening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next submitter to come and talk to us is Mr Ed Mead. He wouldn't mind coming and joining us around table?
Morning, everybody.
Good morning. So I've got your submission in front of us, so thank you for that.
Yep.
So other than that, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. I guess you've read my submission, so I don't need to go through that again. And I've also read the initial answer. I recommend that the suggestion should be declined at this stage, insufficient justification has been provided. However, should additional evidence be submitted, there may be merit in reconsidering the request. So my task here is to entice you to reconsider. The problem is getting evidence, that is the big problem. My name is Peter Edmead. I'm a retired science teacher and I'm a member of the noise liaison committee with the port and I have been doing that for about 18 months. So I attend all their meetings and I get involved with noise issues. One of the problems that we've noticed in the last couple of years is that the new six wharf has caused a lot of problems to the people in one particular area of Bluff Hill, that is my neighbourhood, Bayview Road. It's a small patch of residential area that is really impacted by loud noises from ships that berth at the six wharf. The port have been extremely diligent in managing the problem. They relocate vessels to other parts of the port, they give us warnings when these noisy vessels are coming in and they're really quite proactive. vessels are coming in and they're really quite proactive. The issue is that the evidence I'm going to give is all subjective. We don't have hard data, there's no objective information of data we can give you because there is no monitoring at our part of the hill. The monitoring is down at Karaka Road which is over the hill from us in the Storms Gully area and they get good data there, but no data from where we live. We really need, to monitor, you know, to monitor the noise, support noise management plan, you can't manage the noise unless you know what is actually happening. So if you don't have the data to know what is happening, how can you manage the noise? That's my bottom line here. I have got to try and give you subjective evidence, I've got some, I asked my neighbours to write something. Would you mind me if I read out some of those?
That's fine, yeah.
Thank you. I brought three along. We have lived on Bayview Road for over 12 years and never had a problem with noise from the port until late 2022 with the arrival of the first noise, noticeably noisy ship birthed at Wharf Six. Most ships at the berth and at the new wharf are not an issue, but the ones that have distinct, distinct engine rumbles are extremely disruptive. We like to sleep with open windows in warm weather, but even having to close the windows and curtains against the noise is no match for the invasive rumble. I'd point out there are other residents on the hill who have double glazing and it's still invasive to them. This has on several occasions led to sleepless nights, headaches and the stress knowing that sleepless night awaits and the consequence of this. Further to this, my work based at my address largely involves sound recording and again, this type of noise cannot be blocked out, leading to whole days where I'm unable to earn an income. Hearing these ships approach the port is often a source of great anxiety. While it is huge relief when the engine rumble ceases for an hour or so after docking, not knowing whether it is one of those horrible ships is very stressful. To iterate, we have lived near the port for a very long time and know that occasional loud noise is to be expected. However, we should not be expected to tolerate this all pervasive noise of loud engine rumble from berth six. It's interesting to note before I go on to the next one, as these things come to mind, the noise consultant Marshall Day didn't envisage this problem at all for Bayview Road. In fact, they say there'll be minor increase in noise after the construction of the wharf primor, phenomenally as a result of growth. My telephone's just gone off in my ears, excuse me. Right. So they didn't envisage it at all. So basically, I think the reason they didn't envisage it because there is no noise monitoring equipment in our area. Hang on, I've got, someone's trying to contact, no, I'm sorry about this. Another resident, we moved into Bayview Road in 2018 with the hope of becoming our long-term retirement home. At the time of the purchase, we accepted that there will be noise emanating from the port and that would affect our home location, but decided to go ahead after speaking to neighbours who indicated that the noise levels were not excessive. This proved to be the case with noise levels quite acceptable over the next few years. Even during the construction of the new six wharf, noise levels were acceptable because we knew it was transitory. Loud pile driving was considered transitory and would not be a lasting issue. However, once the new six wharf was commissioned, noise levels became unacceptable when certain container ships use the new wharf. Loudness, sound amplitude isn't the issue, it's low frequency continuous invasive rumble produced from the ship's generators. One of the issues, I'm not reading now, one of the issues is that the port have to report on noise, but they have to report on loudness in decibels, sound amplitude. They don't need to report on low amplitude noise and it's the low amplitude noise which is causing all the problems. They don't have to report on it, which is not in part of their requirements to do so. They made efforts, I have to admit, Marshall Day has made efforts to come to our road to take noise measurements, but they need to, excuse me, can I have some water? My mouth is drying up.
Certainly, yeah.
It's been a while since I had to give assemblies and things like that.
Doing very well.
They've managed to get hold of some transportable monitoring equipment and they've come to our road, but the day they did it, a couple of months ago, the ship didn't turn up at the right time and they missed it. So they weren't able to gather any data at all. You might argue that, why don't the, why don't the residents be more vocal about this? You know, there is a complaints procedure, there is a, you know, a web, a webpage that you can go on to and complain and the port always tell me that, well, we get some reports, usually from the same people, but other people don't respond. Now, there is a bit of nuance to this. People tend to, it's like voting, you know, if you want to vote for a party and say, well, my vote won't mean much. And people have said in Bayview Road to me that, well, what, you know, it'll have no effect really because I'm only one vote. You know, there's a bit of research being done in this and it's been used to the detriment of those people in other, in other arenas, you know? Keep it up, in the end it becomes the new normal and they won't complain anymore. Well, I'm determined and the people on the noise liaison committee are determined that this doesn't become the new normal because it has ramifications for the health of these people who live up there. So my contention is that we need not just the sound monitoring on Karaka Road, we also need it at the top where we live, the neighbourhood where I am, on Bayview Road. So at least you can get some data that allow you to manage it. That is my submission. Had enough?
Thank you.
You want to kick me out now?
No, no, got some questions for you.
Thank you.
So you're on the committee?
I'm on the committee.
Have you made that sort of application or request or through the committee to the port?
Yes, it's been mentioned and spoken about many times.
Right.
The issue is the port at the moment, to be absolutely honest, let's be honest here, cannot do much about it themselves. I think they're doing everything they can, to be honest. There was a suggestion that it's all to do with noisy old ships and, you know, why don't news, why doesn't New Zealand stop the noisy old ships and using New Zealand ports? That would resolve the problem, not just in Napier but other ports as well. And I thought that that was a really good proposal. However, it was ditched because the monopolies commission said it was uncompetitive. I noticed that they have now moved the responsibility for following this up to Maritime New Zealand, who I've been in contact with and they have sort of, I think they're trying to push it in the long grass. They're trying to, but there are people in Bayview, there's a nurse who does shift work, there's this lady whose personal business requires sound, there are people with babies up there. My wife, she, she's affected by it much more than me. You know, she has used our cot to go try and sleep in different parts of the house, including the garage, to try and get away from the noise when one of these noisy ships are in. But I can't give you data because there's no means to collect data, it's all subjective. Well, it's, you know, I can tell you it's terrible, but unless you go up there and see for yourself, it's just my word for it.
As a non-acoustic expert myself, the, the, the monitoring station they do have appears, and we are told, that it's much closer to the port, i.e. it's more sort of the worst case scenario in terms of noise effects.
So what is close to the port?
The, the monitoring.
Oh, the monitoring, yes, in Karaka Road.
Yeah.
There's Shakespeare, which you probably know, but there's another valley which is Storms Gully and Karaka Road goes down to that from Seapoint Road and it faces the other side of the hill from where we live. We, you come back over the hill, down into Shakespeare, then up onto the top of the hill again and that's our neighbourhood which is in direct line of sight to the port. I can sit at my deck, I can see the ships when they come in. Now, some, some friends say, oh, you're just a nimby, not in my backyard, but we're not, you know, we do recognise the need for a port on this side of New Zealand. There's no other port between Taronga and Wellington really, you know, Gisborne is too small. You know, it's an absolute necessity for New Zealand, but I think you need to know what's happening so you can manage the noise.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr Ed Mead?
Yeah, it seems to me that the issue of concern here is the low amplitude noise, which I think the evidence is that's been generated from the ships themselves, from the generators on the ship.
The generators.
So if that noise is being generated from the ships, I would think the monitoring station at Karaka Road would pick it up. So I was just wondering if the solution might be to amend the appendix in the district plan which refers to the port noise management plan, just to make it crystal clear that the monitoring that's undertaken is to include low amplitude noise, including noise emanated from ships?
I think it does include low, low amplitude noise, but the, it doesn't know what's happening where we live.
So you say the low amplitude noise at Bayview Road is different than the low amplitude noise at Karaka?
No, not at all, it would be the same.
Right.
But it's, the, 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 the noise comes from older ships that have generators with diesels and the exhaust system doesn't have protection. You can get a modern ship come in and it's quiet. The older ships produce low amplitude noise that is monitored in Karaka Road for the Karaka Road area, but is not monitored in Bayview Road for the Bayview neighbourhood. So you don't really know what's going on there at the moment, that's just a blank area. You know the, what's happening around Karaka Road, but not up at Bayview Road.
But isn't it the same noise?
Oh yeah, it'd be the same noise.
Yeah.
It's a bit like me talking to you, but someone over there can hear me and maybe because of the acoustics of the place, I sound really low, but you don't know as a manager what is happening there, all you know is what's happening here where the monitoring is being done by these machines or whatever. Do you see?
Do you think the noise?
Do you, do you see that?
Well, hang on a minute, wait for the question. So do you think the noise at Bayview Road is worse than the noise at Karaka Road in terms of this?
No, I don't think it's worse.
Right.
I think Karaka Road, Karaka Road is, is quite noisy, I think.
Yeah.
I quite, I don't, it's to do with the acoustics. I've got this theory, my pet theory, is that there's a sort of an acoustic sort of, you know, when you have the sound shell down at the front?
Yep.
It's designed to make it, to give good sound and reflect the sound back.
Yeah.
I think the acoustics landscape is a little bit complicated round that part of the hill and I think there's a kind of focus for the noise in Bayview Road that you don't know about because you don't have any monitoring. But it's the same noise, it's the same, it's not different noise because of Karaka Road.
Okay.
It's the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, some people are looking puzzled.
Kind of, just wondering, the noise contours, don't they take into account all of the points that you're raising?
Yeah, noise contours are a way of monitoring noise and they were set up at a time before six wharf was built. They were, they were, they've been adjusted since, but they've been adjusted without any knowledge of what the noise is up at our area. So when the noise contours, you can look on, you can, you can go online and see the noise contours. I questioned Marshall Day on this and the initial contours were designed at the time of the original, well, a long time ago, not the original port, but a while ago. They then did another analysis before the six wharf was built that indicated that there would be no extra noise. They are blatantly wrong, there is extra noise. So their noise contours maybe should be investigated or inspected again or challenged.
And my understanding is that Marshall Day validated them just in April. Is that your understanding as well? So they, they may have been drawn or modelled before six wharf was constructed, but then validated and proven to be largely very correct.
Yeah, they validate it using data from the existing monitoring station. They haven't got the full picture.
Okay.
They need a monitoring station in Bayview Road and they'll probably get a completely different picture.
For your information, the evidence we heard yesterday was that they took a mobile monitor around to validate the curve as it went around.
Yeah, but there was no ship in port at the time.
Right, okay.
I know, they used my deck, they came onto my property and used my deck for that monitoring. No ship here.
Okay, and that's the point in contention, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr Ed Mead? Okay, thank you very much, that was very helpful.
Do you think you've got enough?
Coming.
Yeah.
Much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Now, we are due for a morning break, we're slightly early there, five minutes. So we'll probably adjourn the hearing and resume at 10.50 here for Mr Chan for the Vigil Brown Group. So in the meantime, we're adjourned for a morning break, thank you. So in the meantime, we're adjourned for a morning break. Thank you.
Everybody, Marina. Hearing Stream Four has reconvened after morning break, morning tea break. Our next submitter to talk to us is Mr Chan on behalf of the Vigor Brown Group.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. We have read your pre-circulated statement, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
But you're more than welcome to talk to that statement.
Thank you. The panel will see that our written submissions have essentially two subjects. The first is the proper interpretation and application of the NPS. I think I've got the right. Yes, the National Policy Statement on Urban Development. And the second subject is whether the proper zoning for the Vigor Brown area and the surrounds. Since I've now read both the Section 42a reports for both Hearing Stream Four and Hearing Stream Six, it appears that they will deal with the first subject and Hearing Stream Six will deal with the actual zoning. Okay, so I'll confine myself then to the first issue in my submissions, which is the proper interpretation of the NPS, because it appears to be heavily relied on by the council for introducing high-density housing to Napier. Now, a number of submitters have submitted that the NPS does not permit the council to introduce high-density to Napier because it only applies to Tier One cities, and Napier is Tier Two. But the Section 42a report says, while I agree with the submitters that Napier City Council is not required to include medium and high-density housing, I do not agree with the sentiment that this means they are incorrectly implementing the NPS by doing so. Napier City Council is still required to implement those policies applicable to Tier Two councils. And then she then refers to Policy One and Five of the NPS. Now, we submit that this is a fundamental misinterpretation of the NPS in relation to high-density housing, which affects the Vigor Brown area, which is bang in the middle of a proposed high-density zone. That interpretation ignores two important principles of statutory interpretation: expressio unius est exclusio alterius, expression of one thing is the exclusion of the other, and generalia specialibus non derogant, general things do not derogate from specific things. So dealing with expressio unius first, when the NPS deals specifically with high-density housing, that is, buildings of at least six stories, it is always expressly limited to Tier One urban environments. I won't go through all of them, but I've referred to them in the paper. It's in Policy Three, which defines high-density really as building heights of at least six stories in relation to Tier One urban environments. In Policy Four, in Clause 3.31, and then Clause 3.36, they are the four places where Policy Three is referred to. And they all are restricted to Tier One expressly. And it's actually spelled out in Clause 1.32 of the NPS. Some objectives, policies, and provisions in Parts Three and Four apply only to Tier One, Two, or Three local authorities. Now, this is clearly, we say, because the Minister for the Environment in preparing the NPS carefully weighed all of the benefits and disadvantages of high-density housing, and determined that it was only appropriate for large Tier One cities. And this kind of conclusion is actually supported by the council's own experts, who reported on heritage areas, Elizabeth Bishiff and Anne Galloway. They said, "The submitters also challenged the perceived requirement for HRZ under NPS, which applies to Tier One cities, while Napier is Tier Two. From a heritage viewpoint, we can consider this a valid objection. HRZ permits buildings of a height and scale not currently existing in Napier, and would be very disruptive in proximity to a heritage zone." Then they say MRZ would be more appropriate in a city the size of Napier. I interpolate here to refer to another document, which I don't refer to in the submissions, but it's actually the council's own document, which is Further Submission Number 524, which is dated 20th of May 2024, submitted by the urban design team leader, Georgina King. And in that further submission, the council itself opposes the 19.5 metre height in identity zoning. And they say, "We seek a reduced height." In the further submission of the council, urban design team leader says, "The objective of this further submission is to ensure that the design outcomes of Napier align with our city's intended character over the next 10 years, and to facilitate a cohesive transition towards medium-density development in suitable locations. The further submission aims to reinforce high-quality design standards, fostering an attractive urban landscape both within sites and across neighbourhoods. It is noted that the extent of proposed medium-density development is ambitious, and as such, it is advocated that caution be exercised when considering medium-density development. It is recommended that this be undertaken in areas close to the city centre, i.e. existing built form reflects and supports the increase in height, scale, and density." So even the council's own urban design team says no to high-density, and at most there should be medium-density, but with caution exercised to suit the surrounding areas. So this, my submission, reinforces the distinction made in the NPS between large Tier One cities, for which high-density is suitable, and smaller areas, which high-density is not suitable. Going back to paragraph 14 of my submission, if the NPS had wanted Policy Three to be applied to Tier Two, even optionally, it could easily have said so. There is no suggestion anywhere in the NPS that it could apply to Tier Two. The express specific application of Policy Three, that's high-density, to Tier One excludes its application to other tiers, expressio unius. And the consultant policy planner in the Section 42a report cannot rely on the general policies in Policy One and Five of the NPS, to apply Policy Three by the back door, because the general policies cannot derogate from the specific application of Policy Three to Tier One, that's the generalia specialibus rule. So in our submission, it's not permissible to allow high-density in Napier generally, or specifically around the Vigor Brown area, in reliance on the NPS. So unless the panel has any questions, down my submissions on that particular issue, and then I'll be back for Stream Six.
Do you want to talk about the HRZ around the heritage area as well, as part of your...
Yes, I can do. I thought that was sort of part of Stream Six.
You're going to leave that to...
That's been dealt with in the Section 42a report for Stream Six.
I suppose its relevance far as, if that area around Vigor Brown were more to be proposed to be zoned MRZ, medium-density, i.e. two to three stories, you wouldn't have the same level of concern around the effects of that, and the application of the NPS, if you know what I mean?
Well, first of all, that hasn't been suggested.
No.
Anywhere. It's only been proposed to have high-density in the district plan. So the group hasn't actually considered that as a possibility. We're fighting the fight that we're facing, not something that hasn't been presented to us before.
But you are seeking something else instead of high-density.
Yes, we're seeking general.
Yeah, just general, not even medium-density.
Not medium. We'll be seeking, in the area, it appears that the underlying zone of the heritage overlay itself will be general. Well, it seems to be accepted by the council that it should be general. That makes sense. But the larger surrounding area, we say should also be general. We haven't suggested it should be medium. Nobody else has suggested it should be medium. It's only been suggested to be high-density, and that position has been maintained largely in the Section 42a report for Stream Six. But I'll be...
Okay. And so your main concern is that you think, or consider the council have applied Policy Three, which is the one that has that tiered approach to residential, including six-story...
Yes, Policy Three, which allows...
Incorrectly to Napier.
Yes, definitely, because it just simply isn't contemplated in the NPS. If it could, then you could apply it to Tier Three as well, which is even smaller areas. That would just be ridiculous. What's the point of having the policy say, "This is for Tier One," and then everybody applies it for everywhere? That's a misreading of the NPS in our submission.
Okay. But the NPS doesn't have other policies that do apply to Tier Two.
Yes, they do.
Which encourages a greater level of housing enablement.
Yes, they do.
In their own city, depending how, and it's up to the council to determine the appropriateness.
Yes, they do. But you still can't expand the general policies so far that they cross over the restrictions set by the specific policies. That's the generalia rule. Tier One specifically has provision for high-density up to six-story, never mentioned for Tier Two or Tier Three. So it makes a mockery of the express wording relating to high-density by just applying it everywhere. We say it's a matter of statutory interpretation. Otherwise, it would easily have said so. Could easily have said so. And it actually, Clause 1.32 says, "Some policies only apply to One, Two, or Three." So it's got to be contemplated that certain things only apply to certain tiers. That's what it says. And if the NPS only ever refers to high-density, Policy Three, in connection with Tier One, how could it be rational or permissible to then just willy-nilly apply it to everywhere else?
Questions?
Yes, you're bubbling away there.
And the proposition you're putting to us today is quite novel, in my experience, and I think you're drawing rather a long bow. I mean, if Tier One, under the MPSUD, it's mandatory for Tier One councils to consider HRZ, but where in the MPSUD does it say that a Tier Two council can't implement an HRZ equivalent zone if, on the basis of its analysis of the housing capacity needs for its district, it decides that's appropriate in terms of Policy One, Policy Five, Objective One? Where in the NPS does it preclude this council from doing that explicitly?
It doesn't explicitly with those words, but nor does it explicitly say, "And you can consider Tier One either."
Say that again, I didn't understand what you're saying.
The NPS doesn't say explicitly what you've just asked me, but nor does it explicitly say, "Here Two can consider and apply Policy Three and high-density." Why not? We say it's obvious why not, because it's so explicitly directed to Tier One. It only ever refers to it in relation to Tier One.
I don't know what you're saying, I'm just not convinced by your argument. So what if the council decided that in its district that intensification was warranted, and high buildings were warranted, and they didn't call it HRZ, they called it something else, but they leaned on the HRZ provisions that are in the Act itself? There's nothing to preclude a council doing that.
Well, they would have to justify it on a proper basis.
Yeah, which is what this council's done, isn't it?
Well, no, because they're justifying it in terms of the NPS, which is totally wrong. If they want to justify it, they can't say, "The NPS tells us to look at it. We can look at it, it's all good." It does not allow them to do that. If they want to do it, they have to do it in some other way, and it has to be justified in a proper way. Now, so far, they themselves say, "It's too high." The urban design team leaders say, "It's too high." Their experts say, "That doesn't suit Napier." So where is the proper basis? Or imposing something that no resident, as far as I'm aware, has ever asked for in Napier? There is... There is no proper basis. They just say, we want high-density close to the city. That's not a basis for making such a drastic and reckless change to the character of really special areas in Napier. There just isn't the evidence to support why that's a good idea and why residents want it, because they don't. So I say, you can't just fall back on the NPS and say, oh, that looks like a good idea because we can work through the wording of the general policies and include Tier One. So that's got to be put aside, and when that's put aside, they haven't really considered it at all in my submission. There is, there is no evidence to support that this would suit Napier. In fact, they have to overcome the NPS, which says, well, this isn't really suitable for Tier Two.
It doesn't say that, does it? It says it's mandatory for Tier One. Where does it say it's not suitable for Tier Two?
It's absolutely implicit in specifying it only to Tier One and never saying, and you can consider it for Tier Two, and also saying, some policies only apply to Tier One, Two, or Three. And it's clear which ones do apply only to Tier One, and that's one of them. It was 1.3.2.
Did you look at Section 4.1 of the NPS? It's out the timeframes for implementation, and in the table, the second row of the table, under the heading of Intensification, it refers to Policy Five.
Yes.
But if the council was looking at intensification as an issue and looking at Policy Five, and if they decide that an HRZ equivalent zoning is appropriate, there's no issue with that, is there?
Well, for the reasons I've already given, I assume that there is, because intensification doesn't just mean six-story apartment blocks. Intensification could have more dwellings within a smaller area, or it doesn't just, it doesn't mean, and you can put six-story apartment blocks up, when we've said all along, Tier One, Tier One, Tier One.
Can I just turn to Policy Five, because that's, to me, quite critical, where it says, district plans applying to Tier Two, I'm unshortening this, urban environments enable heights and density of urban form commensurate with the greater of either access to public transport, to a range of commercial activities, et cetera, or the relative demand for housing and business use in that location. So, so that's, that is the policy window, which I think the council are viewing the district plan
Yes.
In terms of the NPS, that they've never said applying Policy Three. So are you sort of putting the point that there hasn't been a sufficient evidential base for justifying the relative demand for housing and business use in the city?
Yes, for high-density, yes.
All right. Okay.
And the council heavily relies on the NPS as if that were the impetus for introducing high-density. But their own experts and their own planners say, no.
Mr Chair, it seems to me this, are you appearing today as legal counsel, or are you giving evidence as a layperson?
I'm making submissions, so I'm not giving evidence as such. But I'm not, I am a lawyer.
I know you're a lawyer.
But I'm, I'm not appearing as a lawyer, I'm appearing as a member of the group.
So you're giving us layperson evidence today, or legal submissions?
I'm giving effectively legal submissions.
You can't do that as a layperson, if you want to, okay. Anyway, so to appear to me as chair, this submitter is raising legal issues. It is part of the reply, I think we need an opinion from council solicitor on the issues being raised here, and also for the reply to fully document or point us to existing Section 32 documents that support the case for high-density residential zoning in Napier. I don't think we need to brush the issue under the table, but I think we need to respond, have the officers respond to it in reply.
Those particular points, yeah.
There'd be a legal opinion and just a reminder of where, in the Section 32 analyses that have been undertaken to date, or any other analyses that the need for HRZ was determined.
Thank you. There are my submissions on that point, so
Yeah.
I'll be back again
Hearing Stream Six.
On the actual zoning for the Vigor Brown area.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chan. And I think our final submitter is Reed, is it? Oh, Mr Peacock, thank you. Good morning. We've got your, well, your two submissions in front of us, so thank you for that. And so here's your chance to talk to your submissions, so thank you.
Yes, so, yeah, thank you for that. I'd like to read it out, it's just over one page long. I've got hard copies, if anybody would like to follow it through, as I read it.
You're just talking to your submission, the submission, you know, we'll find, yeah, we've I want a hard copy, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Yep.
All right. So this is, this is not the, your submission, the original submission, this is something else, okay. Okay, I misunderstood.
Extra.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Yes, my name's Keith Peacock. My fellow submitter, Geoff Reed, is unable to attend today and sends his apologies. We're property owners, we're both property owners in the proposed large lot residential zone in the Kent Terrace area. We wish to speak today to our submission on the proposed rule relating to the grazing of stock, being LLRZR5. We acknowledge and thank the council's processing planner, who has recommended that our submission and suggested changes should be supported by the decision-makers and be incorporated into the proposed plan. However, and this is why we're here today, although council's planner has supported our submission around permitting the grazing of stock on properties for grass control, the planner's recommendation is that this permitted activity shall only apply to sites over 5,000 square metres in size. This restriction, this restriction is not the outcome we originally sought. Many of the hillside properties in the Kent Terrace area of the proposed large lot residential zone are below 5,000 square metres. Some utilise stock grazing, predominantly sheep, for grass maintenance and fire control, as well as the bonus of some home-kill meat. It is the most effective and efficient means on managing these properties. As some of the properties, mainly those less than 5,000 squares, can't sustain having animals all year round, they share the animals with neighbours, shifting them from property to property as feed allows. This methodology has been in place for several years, and as far as we are aware, there have been no issues or complaints. For properties less than 5,000 square metres, the additional cost of having to apply for resource consent and ongoing monitoring costs will, in our opinion, result in residents not grazing stock, which will in turn result in long, dry rank growth, which will become a fire hazard in our dry summers and allow gorse and blackberry to establish. The areas that are currently maintained by grazing are generally the steeper slopes. Mechanical maintenance, such as scrub bars or line trimming, is generally costly, costly, time-consuming, and can be dangerous. The noise produced by these high-riving machines can be annoying to neighbours, particularly at weekends, when most of this work is undertaken. Planting out, planting with trees is an option, and some have undertaken this, but again, this is costly and not always successful, given the dry conditions on some of these slopes and a fire hazard in such a built-up area. The Napier City Council Animal Control Bylaw has restrictions that control nuisance values in regard to animals. 3.2 of the bylaw states, the keeping of animals must be of a restricted quantity and in a suitable manner, such that their keeping does not cause a nuisance, excessive noise, or a health hazard to residents in the neighbourhood. We believe any nuisance outcomes that's from grazing animals can be controlled using the existing animal control bylaw. So in summary, we are of the opinion that grazing of stock in the proposed large lot residential zone should be a permitted activity with no minimum property size. However, if the council does require a minimum net size area, this will reduce to 2,000 square metres rather than the proposed 5,000. So we thank you, the chair and the committee, for your time, and invite any questions.
Okay, certainly. Commissioner Van Voorthuisen.
And Mr Peacock, you may not be aware that as part of our process, we posed a number of questions to the officers ourselves, once we'd read their 42a reports. One of the questions we posed was, in LLRZR5, why is it necessary to impose a minimum side area for the grazing of livestock? Livestock can still be reasonably grazed on sites smaller than 5,000 square metres. And the officer's response was, I agree that livestock could still be reasonably grazed on sites smaller than 5,000 square metres and am open to deleting this condition. So the issue you brought to our attention was one we ourselves were aware of, and the staff have conceded that that limitation, well, they said they're open to deleting it, so that's their advice to us, and so we'll be considering that going forward.
Well, that's a very good outcome, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah. Case closed.
Well, we wouldn't like to forejudge that, but it'd be a reasonably safe bet.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Now, it's common sense. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr Peacock, for that. Here, here, Rob. Okay, just to confirm, we do not have any further submitters to come today, I mean, additional submitters. I don't believe we do. So with that, the Hearing Stream Four is concluded. We will probably issue a minute shortly afterwards, just to cover a couple of questions that the panel have had, rising from submissions we've heard today. But other than that, I will end the hearing, and thank you very much for all the parties involved, including the submitters, and I appreciate your time and effort. So thank you very much. Thank you.